This regular meeting started on Monday, the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
All right, welcome everyone. Rule call please.
Mayor Lockland.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Goodweiler.
Here.
Stulman.
Here.
Motion please to approve tonight's agenda.
Second, Nick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the last December fifth meeting, regular council meeting, approval of a class C liquor retail alcohol license for herbin lose and some board commission, board and commissions appointments, reappointments, resignations. They are the resignation of Angie Miller from Park and Rec. Resignation of Brian Pierce from the Park and Rec Committee. Resignation of James Ellison from the Park and Rec Committee and the resignation of Jenny Embry from the zoning board of appeal, zoning board of adjustment. Accept the resignation of Neil Corzamo from the zoning board of adjustment. The reappointment of Kristen Rude to the Parks and Rec Commission. The reappointment of Nate Barks to the Animal Control Commission. The reappointment of Brad Bauer to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The new appointment of Karen Suckremel to the Horace Historic Preservation Commission as a member of the Hoover Presidential Foundation. The appointment of Peggy Herman for the Historic Preservation Commission and reappointment of Liz Seberling to the Historic Preservation Commission. And also on the consent agenda is the you accept an option for I guess it's the second period of a contract with the National Park Service for snow plowing and fire and alarm services. Also to approve the October financial report and the claims. Motion please.
Okay, so we got a little uptick in the price for the plowing, which is great. Four hundred dollars.
That was, that's a good one.
Oh wait.
Yeah, I think it used to be like six thousand and it went up a couple of years ago to eighty-five hundred.
It's the same as last.
Yeah, yeah, it's the same. It's the same as the last couple of years.
Another, is this the last year of this contract?
No, it's a, there's a five-year. This is period number two. So they have.
A little more money next time. We were paying for salt and the old labor and all that.
You're not wrong. It came in late. So that's my fault for not having the reminder in my calendar. So it'll be changed going forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone else?
When we do a renewal for liquor license, we ask the chief if he has any issue.
Hearing nothing else, let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda, please.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Goodweiler.
Yeah.
All right, this time is the presentation communications open forum. If anyone wants to address the council, we want to hear what you have to say. We cannot act on anything, but we'll listen to you. Anyone here to speak to us? Hearing none, we'll move on. Regular non-consent agenda consists of a acceptance of a resignation of Park and Rec Director Melissa Russell. Before we vote on this, staff prepare the rule statement that I'd like to read. Melissa began her employment in the fall of two thousand four as a children's librarian. She worked for the public, the juvenile, the kids, and ordered materials, developed programs toward youth. In oh eight, Melissa was prompted, promoted to the Park and Rec Director where she could continue to expand the youth programs in West Branch. She developed, organized, and led winter, spring, and summer and fall programs for the youth and teens and later added adult and senior activities. Melissa worked with multiple Eagle Scouts over the years, including a dedication to the Rocket Shelter and Shelter at Lions Field, Woxie Park signage, and the Dog Park, and then just addition of permanent cornhole game at Woxie Park and Horseshoe Pits and Bronnic Park. She has spearheaded projects in existing, at existing, and new parks in West Branch. Bronnic Park improvements include additional sand volleyball courts and lighting, new playground equipment, shelter, bathroom improvements, paved lap pathways in Bronnic Park. Lions Field included an ADA pathway in the western facilities. And two new parks were built under Russell's tenure, Woxie Creek Park and Covey Park. She's had many professional accomplishments over the years, overseeing planning and construction and implementation of Covey Park. It's one of the most substantial. Covey Park holds numerous ball tournaments and leagues each year. It also is a licensed concession stand, pickleball court, playground, and walking trail that many of the community take advantage of. Melissa has been a primary organizer in the city's many community events, including the annual Easter egg hunts, hometown days, Hoover Days, the Fall Fest, the downtown trick or treat, which was past. Melissa has always helped in various departments over the years and has been an asset to the city of West Branch. We will miss her and wish her luck in the future. I'd like to remind also that she organized the adult volleyball league and all-night volleyball, which is very difficult sometimes. And we're gonna miss Melissa. That's, question's been asked before, but I'm not sure what, whatever happens. So, any other comments, questions before we vote?
Do you wanna do a, oh, nevermind, sorry. Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Stulman. Goodweiler. Sexton.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa, for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
Resolution twenty-two dash one thirteen. Providing a proposed job description for the position of the new Parks and Rec Director. Motion please. Nick had a second. Couple of these items are generated from Melissa's suggestion, I believe.
Yep, yep.
Does that mean anything else to add? Anyone else? Let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Sexton.
All right, snow removal. The resolution twenty-two dash one fourteen. Proving a snow removal service contract with Casper Lawn Care. Motion. It's like a fair deal, fair price. Anyone else anyway? Go ahead.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stulman.
Yeah. Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
That's an, an on-call. We'll call him.
Correct.
Who will notify us to call him?
It would be me calling.
Gotta wait for a complaint or gonna say something on, I don't know. We notice, twenty-four hours? What do we got, forty-eight hours?
It's forty, we're not gonna be that picky. So it'll probably be, you know, four days after to be realistic. So now obviously everybody gets a warning the first time first, so. But typically we put like notices, whether it's public works or police, whoever's got the time, but a notice, a door, a notice on the door the first time.
Let's go ahead and vote, please. Resolution twenty-two one fourteen.
I should say.
All right. Resolution twenty-two dash one fifteen. Do that once in a while. Prove the annual agreement, the amount of nine thousand forty dollars the US Geological Service pay for the ongoing operation and maintenance of the stream flow gauging at the Woxpin-Ronocree and College Street Bridge.
Move. Second.
Refresh my memory, why, why have you continually ordered on this? Is this for possible grants for downstream flooding and upstream flooding?
The helps.
Think so, yes. If we just sit there and did nothing and had no data to back it up. And how many years have we been on?
Oh, sixteen.
Six. Since ever, before I got mayor, before I was mayor, it was eight, seven.
I don't know. We've been doing it.
It's been invaluable.
We put it in. I was on the council when we started.
I can chime in if you want for a second on the history of the gauge. We've had it since two thousand fifteen. I'm John with the USGS in Iowa City and we've had it since two thousand fifteen. We've got seven years of record there now, which is getting beneficial to doing more and more studies there in the watershed. So this year we actually collected the highest, the second highest on record in July. And that big event came through. I should say the second highest on record since we've been collecting data there. But so it's been getting good data.
So is this data mainly for what's downstream? How much does this actually help us upstream?
It's actually both. So I'm not sure if you're familiar, but we did a model there. One of our scientists, Charlie Seagren, did a model in the watershed. And it helps with proposing retention basins upstream on how, what their effects would do on the flooding downstream. So it can, it helps in the entire watershed. And for your purposes, I would say that the longer term data, the more that we collect, the better we can calibrate models, either be it us, it be a consulting firm, the Iowa DNR. Whoever does it, it doesn't have to be USGS, but the data's there for anyone to use to do those model calibrations. So it should help anywhere in the watershed essentially.
What budget did this come out of? Stormwater budget?
So one of the arguments I've had for years of keeping this every year is that as we do our stream work, how are we really gonna have a gauge what it's doing if we take our gauge out? So, you know, once we do that widening and all that stuff we do down below, we'll be able to see besides the fact that obviously what they've been doing at the park must work if the second highest level been registered last July and we weren't bailing water out of crap. So so, you know. It must, what, what's been happening almost already be working.
Yeah, we usually, yeah. The whole design. I have a feeling once that's finished, we'll probably stick with it a year or two more, at least. We need it, we need some massive rains is what we need.
Not for that budget.
We don't wanna break any records.
So I guess realistically down the road, how far, how far do we actually think we are from upstream?
Structures.
Structures. Way, quite a way, right?
I think like quite a ways, yeah. It's a lot of money. Well, some could be simple.
Just, I guess my thought is that I know if we continue this, they, they pick up portion of it. It looks like now we're doing the two-thirds and they're doing almost the third, about that much. I do, right now this something we should think about maybe dropping to, even if we drop it to five, ten years, get us closer to upstream, then maybe looking at it again for upstream. Me, we already got the model for what's going on down below. The park is, the park has done, has really helped us. Our budget's showing that we need to, need to save some money. So me, this was something.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
It is at a storm sewer. So it's a little bit different than general fund.
This is stormwater money. This isn't going to sink the town, get rid of this. This isn't going to cure our fire department problems or our police department problems. You know, the only thing this is going to do is keep us from, you know, to do it. You know, eight thousand dollars worth of stormwater. What is that? What's eight thousand dollars worth of stormwater work?
Bro, I got a question from Matt. When you guys go around and clean out corn sewers, drains, do you take that out of storm water or not? You know, stormwater work?
I mean, not really. Currently, there's no line for wages. And I mean, if we were to actually rent something or use a piece of equipment, it would come out of it. But out of the capital, like the capital, but other than that.
When the stormwater was set up, it was set up and there was a caveat. They've since pooed all over it because it didn't get wrote down, but it was supposed to be stormwater sewer was for stormwater sewer, period. Wasn't for trucks, wasn't for wages, it wasn't for any of that. Because it's not enough money. If, if you start taking that type of stuff out of a little bit of money it generates, then it's not anything anyway. It might, it might as well just breathe the tag. It's not anything. So we saved that, was, the whole idea was, was it was supposed to be just for stormwater, just for stormwater.
Stormwater intakes, repairs, and things like that. That's.
Stormwater is.
It would trade a lot of money. You'd get about sixty-five thousand in stormwater revenue.
I mean, if you start paying, you start paying part of their wages and part of their vehicles out of it, then it ain't nothing there.
Well, they spend the whole day, yeah.
The issue I would say we have is we're charging our street, our road use tax budget on drainage issues and our road use tax budget is having as much challenges as our general fund. And I don't think that we, I don't think the state would approve us counting time for drainage under our streets budget. So, as Kevin shakes his head, no. It's always a guess, you know, what you think you'll, you'll, you'll spend and do.
Very substantial.
My guess for me is five percent because I, there's times where I, I take calls or even after work, I'll go to somebody's house. Like it's not uncommon because when people are home, that's usually the best way to get on their property. So there's been several times after normal work hours where I've gone to somebody's house. And that's kind of normal for Matt too.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to accept the nine thousand forty dollars.
Councilperson Sexton.
No.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Dean.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Okay, another year. Resolution twenty-two dash one sixteen, a pay estimate number five and the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand two hundred forty dollars and eighty cents Boomerang Corporation for the wastewater treatment facility. Motion. Only question on this subject is, when are we gonna use ARPA funds to pay one of these? Pay one of these or do we pay out or we pay it, are we accruing interest as we borrow money from?
I think what I'd like to see first is what the cost would be for other capital improvement projects because if it's gonna hurt us interest, it may be better to spend that money on east side.
Interest that's coming and.
Or like our, our debt, when we take out our debt, if we're paying four percent interest, I'd rather
All right.
throw ARPA that way to save the, the city money on interest rates.
What's the interest on this song? Two percent?
Two.
Probably less, yeah, yeah.
It's rebated back.
Okay, that's pretty long. Maybe we better, you're right.
I think we've got four more years to spend it. So, and it's just, if you're gonna go to this or east side, we know it's just making the right.
Okay, that answers my question. That's a good one. Little payout. Go ahead, Leslie, let's vote on this.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Stulman. Goodweiler.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
All right, okay, this is exciting. Twenty-two dash one seventeen, recommending award for the contractor, the Herbert Hoover Roundabout Project. Motion please.
Move. Second.
Looks like it came in pretty decently. Under the engineer's estimate. Yeah. One million four hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars-ish. That's the total. We're on the hook for eight hundred thousand?
Yep.
Nine nine.
It'll be eight hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Dave, do you have any construction oversight on this or not? Is that An- Anderson Boger or the engineer, the county engineer?
Anderson Boger is going to be doing the construction inspection on this. They're working on finishing up the other section of the highway on this. Some area, I think, that we're down on one of the projects. We'll be in town if there are issues that will be involved in it. Currently working with you, there's a joint coordination issue to do. We'll try and get all that sorted out and finishing up some minor clearance issues on the KLM properties since they announced the final terms early on. Those expires, we're just getting that contract right now. We're involved.
We're done with the land acquisition one minute, right?
We are.
Barriers? It can't be moved aside?
Be costly.
All right, thanks. Do I get a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman. Goodweiler. Sexton.
Yeah.
All right. What's item nine, discussion?
There's nothing to discuss.
Just discussion.
Yeah.
City administrator, Adam, what have you got?
I am taking a short vacation the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Park and Rec Director search, we got twenty-three applicants. I have Roger Fulton, Matt Goodell, I have Melissa Russell on the hiring committee as well as Kristen Reed from Park and Rec Commission. And then maybe Tom Dean may join us if it works with his schedule. But I thought it was important to have Melissa weigh in as well as for candidates to ask her questions. And then it would be nice to have someone from the Park and Rec Commission on there as well.
Yeah. Readable.
And just my reminder that January is budget work session month. So if you're around, try to be around.
Yep. Yes. Gotta walk over here. Third is regular meeting. Tenth is a work session.
No.
We have V and K's new calendar yet or?
He hasn't delivered yet.
So the third is the regular meeting. The ninth will be a work session. And the seventeenth will be the second work session. And votes that were down. Don't be surprised if we have another one.
Yeah, I'm going on the night.
It's what it is. If, if anyone wants to stop in and chat with Heidi or Adam, they welcome your comments, I'm sure.
Third, ninth.
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
I thought I would want to do that.
Guess you're not going out for birthdays.
Five thirty, unless you wanna do it at six, but five thirty, the sooner the better.
You guys, it's in your. On the second council meeting?
No.
In between. Oh. So the seventeenth, then? Can we do that before council meeting?
There's a budget shift.
We already have a budget meeting. Can I make a suggestion? We're already, we're already a month late. Can it just wait?
I'm thinking February now.
First meeting. First meeting in February.
I do this every year.
And yeah, we can meet too, Gary, in terms of going over. What happened that meeting? Oh, it's no issues, right?
So, you gotta do yours, review it then, right then. Before meeting.
Yep.
So plan on. Six fifteen-ish time sometime in February. Okay, anything else?
Kevin, looking for the first week of February for the acquisition for the uh. Downstream widening project, Sheriff's Office, if we don't have it done by then, so.
Acquisition meeting.
Kind of nation. So one way or the other, it'll be done by then. Right, get on to the property, right?
Is that essentially a court date, or how does that work?
No, in front of this, there's a compensation commission appointed by the uh. Pointed by the county, it's uh, points uh, citizens in three different categories. Uh, realtors, uh, people who have property values because their occupation, then. Last category is like anybody except for ag property can do that, so. The chief judge picked up the name, so we, I filed this stuff today, and we'll be getting a. Date tomorrow, when the person who handles that gets back, so. Shooting for the first week of February to have that completed. And when the sheriff's schedule works out for him. So that will uh, give us time to, we'll have that plenty of time to, before a bid, so that won't hold us up.
What's the worst case scenario, we just pay a little bit more than what we thought it would be?
You get, so, the, the commission comes up with a price, and uh. Can be, it can't be lower than what you offered in the appraisal, but it can be higher, and then if we're okay with that, we put the money in, bring the check down to the sheriff. And that means we have, we have the right to go into the property at that point. They can still appeal the, uh, the, the damages amount, or the compensation amount that was set by the commission, but. That doesn't hold your project up, that's just the money, uh, appeal, it has nothing to do with. You, once you deposit the money with the sheriff, you have the right to do the project.
So this is an easement rights to do the project.
Correct.
It's not.
The permanent and the temporary, no.
Not per. Temporary.
Right. We looked at all sorts of scenarios, negotiating with them, but this one at least sets a deadline.
Alright.
Keep it moving.
Now, it's, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Kevin?
Nope.
Uh, Dave Checkinger, B and K, anything?
But instead of uh, preliminary plans for the east side water main, from that, still, but yeah. Close to go. The schedule said, yeah, next, uh, next year, the, for off. We'll pull the during segment date. On the uh, Herbert Hoover Project, we discussed that already. Looking at uh, trying to do the spring start. And we're starting to contract it, but that's weather dependent. We'll see how uh, what weather progresses on that.
Looking at a full-on closure?
Yes.
Do that?
Full-on.
Yeah.
Through Meadows. I know, that intersection, so it's been uh.
Go east on gravel? Yeah.
Uh, that'll be our. Uh, downstream widening, Kevin talked about that, our goal is to try to get, uh, everything in line, if they're doing a preliminary. Letting to treat clearing, it's just cutting the trees down. Bad habitat, uh, migration dragon, so, um, March is just kind of our, the last. Window, we get that done. Been close, but we'll, we'll have things ready to go, if we do any preliminary then.
Yeah.
Get trees down, and finish up with it, and work at the summer day. And they don't have to be removed, just cut down, uh, that's our special requirement, so. We'll uh, we'll get things lined up, as we pull this up. It's kind of established on that, on the wastewater plant project, they have all the sledge wall now, they're working, they've started putting the temporary irrigation piping in. And we can run the, all the existing bars, but on new iteration, but we're attempting it. Uh, once we get the, the control, uh, or develop the unit, we'll put up, then we'll get the new equipment out and switch the iteration as well. So, they're uh, they're working, obviously, uh, two bolts and, going on this week. Here and there is what allows, trying to do this project.
Are there other easement considerations for the downstream project, like Lynch's and Hanson and Michael?
Yes, we've spoken with uh, most of the uh, the people directly impacted. The archaeological, so, so. Uh, spoke quite a bit with most of the people about that, I know the title, I'm pretty detailed. Conversation with them about it, it's often, it's uh, we could do, very much a basic project. Uh, people there should also support us, as long as we uh, maintain the parameters they gave us, should have issue with that. We can all that, put together now that we know, so, we've got a schedule, we have to do that. The lower property.
Alright.
You own property down there? Anybody talk to you? Are we doing anything with this property down there?
Might want some money.
We need to get this settled, ahead of time. Don't wanna have to deal with Connie, you know? City staff.
Okay, uh, comments, uh, mayor and council, I guess I was gonna bring up Adam's review, we'll do that in February. Hopefully, the first meeting in February. Motion to adjourn? All's in favor, say aye.